Good evening. This is a public hearing that is being held by the Department of Public Works. I will start by reading the notice of public hearing. In accordance with section 1.15, Part 4 of the City of Chelsea Administrative Code, Section 22-64B, Establishment of Solid Collection Fees and Section 3065, Establishment of Water, Sewer, and Trash Billing Rates of the Ordinance of the City of Chelsea, on Tuesday, July 13th at 6:00 PM, we will be holding a public hearing for interested residents to have an opportunity to be heard concerning the proposed increase of solid waste collection fees and the proposed increase for water and sewer rates. My name is Fidel Maltese and I am the Commissioner of Public Works of the City of Chelsea. I do want to present a few slides prior to announcing the rate increases. So just to remind everyone, this is an annual process that we undertake where we have to evaluate and by law, we need to increase the rates in order to meet our costs. Essentially, we are not allowed to run at a deficit. Therefore, we evaluate all of the costs that are incurred every year and that is how we set the rates for the upcoming fiscal year. The rates that we are announcing tonight will be in effect starting the July bills which are going out to residents at the end of this month. So just to give everyone a know review of the challenges that the Department of Public Works faces as we set these rates. The first and biggest challenge in my opinion is that the majority of our cost for water and sewer are tied to the assessment that is given by the MWRA. The MWRA is a regional entity that provides water and treats the sewer for Chelsea. So as you can see on the slide, for FY22, the MWRA is proposing a combined, I'm sorry, an increase of 6.7% for water and an increase of 5.4% for sewer. This is a combined 5.7% increase to our costs. Also, just wanted to note that the enterprise for water and sewer has been impacted by COVID. So as you know, a lot of our businesses and a lot of our larger users were not fully operational in FY21 and thus, we have not been able to recoup a lot of our costs. And finally, this is something that we have talked about during the CIP hearings, during our budget hearings, and it is essentially that we have a lot of aging infrastructure. And with aging infrastructure comes two big things. One is the cost of large investments and also the cost of repairs. So this slide is essentially a snapshot of how our budgets are made up. So the pie chart on the right shows the combined expenses for our water enterprise and the pie chart on the right shows the combined expenses for our sewer enterprise. As you can see, in gray, the majority of our costs are incurred from the cost of the MWRA water assessment. And again, on the table at the bottom, we are just showing that the MWRA is proposing a 5.7% increase in the water assessment for this upcoming fiscal year. So this is a visual way of showing what I spoke about earlier, that the larger users in FY21, which is the year that just ended, we saw a large decrease in the consumption of water in those users. And we attribute that to hotels being closed, to our large office buildings being closed. We are hopeful and confident that in FY22, with the economy picking back up rapidly, that these impacts will not continue. And finally, referring back to our aging infrastructure. In Chelsea, we have had a large support, both from the state, the federal government, and our city council, in terms of continuing to invest in our infrastructure. However, we do still have a lot of infrastructure that has to be replaced and we are aggressively working on it, but undoubtedly, it does have an impact on our cost. So what I wanted to do is share the proposed increases for this upcoming fiscal year. So on the table, what we are showing is Chelsea, we separate our users into three tiers. Tier one are homes that use from 1 to 1,000 cubic feet per month. Tier two are homes that use from 1,001 to 2,500 cubic feet per month. And tier three are large users which use 2,500 cubic feet or more. So what I am highlighting in the right and in the red is the proposed increases in FY22. So as you can see, for tier one, we are proposing an increase of 2.5%. For tier two, we are proposing an increase of 2.6%. And for tier three, which are our biggest users, we are proposing an increase of 5%. What I also want to highlight is that, if you recall, in the last two fiscal years, we have really tried to hold our increases as much as possible. In FY20, we reduced our combined increase for tier one and tier two to 1%. And in FY21, with recognition of the impacts of COVID, we held the increases for tier one and tier two at 0%. So again, in FY20, it was 1%. In FY21, it was 0%. So undoubtedly, when our costs keep going up, particularly as I mentioned earlier, with the 5.7 increase from the MWRA, it's not physically responsible for us to not try to increase the rates as minimal as possible. And then, the last slide, I know it's a conversation that comes up all the time, and it is, where does Chelsea stand? Right? So the MWRA does a report every year where they take a snapshot of the costs of water in all of the communities that they serve. So what I did here is I took six communities that I feel are comparable to us, is those communities that are closest to us, and we basically compared what is the cost of water and sewer. So as you can see, Chelsea has a combined cost for 120,000 cubic feet per year of And the slide shows that there are several communities like Revere, Somerville, and Winthrop that are more expensive than Chelsea. But I do also want to share that there are some communities that are lower than ours. And both Everett and Malden have lower water costs than Chelsea. And that is it for the water sewer rates. Counselor, I don't know if you had any questions?
Sure, I do. Okay. Over here, I see on the page before you said, over here says, "Malden and Everett costs are highly subsidized by the general tax levy." So why can't this city do the same thing as Malden does? So to the people outside, tax levy means that they're being taken up to the city taxes. The taxes are subsidized in the water. I could see you gave a slight increase, 2%, but over here, in 2022, it says on tier two, it says 5 plus 1% combined increase, 2.6. That's for 2022, right? So that means this year, because 2022 starts now. People think it's next year. It's not next year. It's this year.
Right now, in July.
So I want the people to understand that that's what it is. So when you came up here before, I know you gave a moderate, your explanation is fairly well done, you know, why you need it and why you don't need it. But what I want to understand is, we have a water department. What was the amount of money we saved? Can we subsidize that towards it? Or is that already being subsidized to keep the rates lower?
Yes. So as I shared during the budget hearing, and I'll share again, is that the increases in FY20, which was 1%, and the increase in FY21 of 0%, were largely because we took over water and sewer. So if you take, you know, the last three years view, right? So FY20 was 1%. FY21 was, I'm sorry, FY20 was 1%. FY21 was 0%. And now, this year is 2.5%. As a whole, you know, it's a very low increase in the last three years.
So do we expect a savings on the water and sewer department division?
Yes, sir. We absolutely do.
Do we expect to have a savings each additional year because the department we created, right?
Absolutely.
So what I wanted to ask you is, and let the people know, is that savings being subsidized to the water, to the people?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. So as I explained, the way that the charter of Chelsea is set up, right, is an enterprise fund, right? So which means that the water enterprise and the sewer enterprise have to create enough revenue to cover all its costs, right? I mean, if there was a charter change or, you know, we wanted to change the way it was structured, we can definitely have that conversation, but it's a longer conversation. So the way that it is set up now, it's an enterprise fund. So in the enterprise, all of the costs that are incurred in that enterprise have to be covered in that enterprise, right? So we can't borrow from the tax levy in the current setup that we have, right? So the savings that we have incurred with DPW taking over the water department, and in the budget hearings, I shared that the savings are a lot. I mean, we're talking about $700,000 a year that we think we're going to save in FY22. That is the reason why in FY21, and then in FY20, and in FY22, we are able to hold the increase as little as possible. I can assure you, Counselor, that if we had not taken over water and sewer, this increase would be a lot higher.
Excellent. Excellent. Really good explanation to the people can understand, because you have to explain, if you're saving, why is it going up? So now, you're telling them your saving is actually compensated for going up higher because that saving is spread on the cost of fixing it, to fix the enterprise fund. Most people don't know, I didn't know what an enterprise fund was. Simple put, enterprise fund is the money the city uses to fix the water, the pipes, the sewer, your meters, whatever it needs, and that's covered through your water.
That's correct.
So what Mr. Fidel told you, in some ways, it's the accurate way that he explained to you. But there's some things here that I still, I wanted the people to know exactly to understand. So this is a simple way. What you explained is a simple way, because they could come back and tell you and say, "Well, Mr. Fidel, if you saved $700, why did you raise it?" You raised, the reason you raised it because that $700 made up the difference that you were losing in the enterprise fund.
Absolutely.
So that's the bottom line that you explained to the people, because they won't understand. If you tell them you're saving 700 to a million dollars and then you're still raising the rate, so where's the money going? You explain to it where it's going. So that's a, now, the next question I have, so in other words, it ought to, for the city, for itself, like it says over here, in this part here, for the city to keep his water rates down, because water rates is a mortgage. Most people, it's a mortgage. Even if you use a low amount, your minimum you'll pay is $300. And if you own a single-family home and there's only two people, you're probably averaging out $100 a month. If you own a two-family home or three-family home and you got, even if you use 1,700, 1,800, it still comes up to $300 or more. So in other words, how are we gonna stop the steamrolling of becoming a bigger mortgage? It'll be like a bigger mortgage payment. So the only way that I can see from this is through being subsidized through the tax. You would have to, you know, each year, if you have a surplus of money from the taxpayers, if some of it should be, like Revere, like here, you said Everett, a slight, a lower because they have tax levy. So that means they use their tax dollars to subsidize the homeowners who own the stuff. So I was wondering, is that possible for us to do the same thing?
Yeah. As I said earlier, that's a larger conversation that I think, you know, has to be had with the larger council, right? I mean, my understanding is that it would require a charter change, right? I mean, and it would require for it not to be set up as an enterprise. But I do want to answer your point, Counselor, about, you know, that the costs are going up, right? And I want to remind you, right, which is something that you fought for quite a bit, is to increase the discount for those residents that actually need it, right? So as you know, I live in Chelsea. I have a home here. I mean, you know, we use water, we have, we're a family of four. But last year, what we did is we increased the discount amount to seniors, from 10% to 30%, right? I mean, and if you're a senior, that's a really nice discount, really nice discount.
I don't want to say, I never say what I do, but I was an instrumental part in doing that and getting that 20% for people 65 years or older, which at one time, when they gave a 10% discount, the city would only give you 10% discount on the apartment you lived in. Now, if you have a three-family home, they give you, if you're a senior citizen, 20% on all your floors.
30%.
That would, 20%.
30%.
They give you 30?
30% is a discount.
Now we're on up to 30?
It went up to 30%.
Wow. I mean, that's even better.
Exactly.
This fiscal year, we'll get 30%.
30% for all seniors.
Well, there was something else here that I did, and Patrice can attest to it, she can tell you, the tier system. I derived the tier system as you have it now. So you can't change the tier any more than it is. I don't think there's any way you can change it, because I already, the one you're using now is my system, the one I gave, I was instrumental in doing many years ago, because it used to be from 1,000, was from 0 to 1,000, then 1,000 to 1,500, and then 15 to 25. So to give people more flexibility, I made it from 0 to 1,000, 1,000 to 25. But there has to be another way, right, Mr. Fidel? It's got nothing on you, it's got, it's got to do with the people living here. We don't want to drive them out, we don't want the tenants to pay more money, and I understand that the city itself has to sustain itself. So it seems like, from what I'm reading here, the only other solution, the rest of this, and I can't understand why we pay more, why did that W charge us more money? Why does the MWRA charge us more money? What is the reasoning behind them charging us more money?
So the MWRA, you know, and that's something very important, right? So this year, Counselor, the MWRA gave us an increase of 5.7%, right? So their increase is actually twice as high as the increase that we are giving, right? And we're able to keep our increase low compared to what they're giving us because of all the savings and efficiencies that we're having.
But what I don't understand is, I commend you for, you know, what you're doing. It's a good thing. You're trying to help, you're trying not to hurt the water consumption people so much. You have to do what you have to do. I understand that, but I still don't get it. Why does the MWRA charge us more money? What is the reasoning behind them charging us more? Years ago, I can tell you what they told me, okay? And then you tell me if I'm wrong. When I inquired about that many years ago, they said to me, "The MWRA charges you higher because of the way our water is discharged, because we have an ancient system that the water is discharged and they charge us the amount of water we discharged." Well, we can't, we've been trying to fix our system. That's what you and Mr. Ambrosino and the rest have been trying to do, by separating our pipes and connecting it and doing, because our system is old. It won't be done now, it'll be done within a few years. Okay. That's the reason they told me. So once we finish all this, right, the MWRA shouldn't have any more reason. Is that the reason why they charge us more money, because we discharge more water?
It's definitely one of the reasons. It's one of the reasons. So what you are referring to is that a lot of our pipes are combined, right? So rainwater and sewer go on the same pipe, right? So we are paying for all the rainwater that is going on those pipes, right? But in order to separate it, we have to install two pipes, right?
You have to do the work you're doing now.
So we, so we, exactly.
That's great. I know that. See, for years, I've been wanting to understand how this works. And I have a basic idea how it works, but I still haven't figured out why they charge us more. The answer, I just said, you know, I'm redundant, I'm going back to the same question, but the thing is, they say because we use more water, because we use more drain water and... But isn't there some way that they can compensate us for that? Couldn't they say, "Oh, well, Chelsea has an old age, you know, ancient system, right? So let's give them a break." There's no way they can do that to us.
So, you know, what I'll say, Counselor, is that we, Luma Malet, who works in my office, he is part of the executive board, and every year that the MWRA announces those increases, we fight for this, right? We advocate for a lower increase. Both our city manager and myself, we go talk to the board and we really try to fight for a lower rate every year, every year. Unfortunately, you know, they give us the water, right? I mean, it's like trying to fight Eversource or National Grid, you know, on the rate setting. We definitely advocate, we go fight for our residents as hard as we can, but they're...
In the long run...
A larger entity.
They're the ones that win. They determine your rate. So in other words, let me put it bluntly and the way it had, so that people can really understand what it means. The only way you ever, 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 ever gonna see your water rate lower is if it's subsidized through your tax, just like Everett does, because otherwise, your rates are gonna go up each year according to what the MWRA charges and how much money the enterprise fund, how much money comes into that fund. So the water department of our city with Mr. Fidel and Mr. Lu, they have to have a certain amount of money for them to function. So I could fight until I'm blue, I can fight until I turn 22 colors, but it wouldn't matter unless we, those counselors, my fellow counselors, determine that we're gonna have to do something like Everett did to subsidize our water in some way. So even if each year it increases, it increases a minimal amount. It'll increase a half a percent, 1%. It will never go up 5, 6% a year, because at that rate, in the long run, you'll be paying $1,000 a month for water and...
So, yeah, the one thing that I wanted to add, Counselor, is that, you know, we heard your concerns about, you know, the price of water in the last two years, and we discounted a lot to one population, right? And it was seniors. And those seniors are now enjoying a 30% discount, which is very nice and very heavy, right? I mean, if you recall...
I commend you for that, man. The city, I have no, I just want the people to truly, truly understand how this functions. I didn't understand it, and I'm one of the people. I didn't understand it until it was explained to me in simple terms.
Sure. But what I'm getting at, Counselor, is that a few months ago, when you were setting the tax rate, right, our city manager, what he suggested is actually, instead of holding down the taxes for everyone, you know, what he suggested was putting a little money aside, right, for those people that needed it, right? So if you recall, the council voted for...
Yeah, I know, from 35, yeah, two, he's did it in small increments.
Right. But you also set aside $750,000 to help, you know, the homeowners that actually needed, right? So that seems like a better approach, you know, to answer your conversation.
I get what you're saying, right? I don't know what the solution is, Mr. Fidel. I can't tell you what the solution is, I don't know what it is, I just, I can only, how to say it? Let me put it an easy way. I can only ask you to see if it's possible to do such a thing. I don't know how it is, because I'm not the brainset of the water and sewer department. I'm just a simple man that tries to understand what it is, and I want the rest of the people to understand the same way. It's very easy to understand when it's explained in a simple manner. The whole idea is here, right? You were trying to hold the cost down. I understand that, but the cost ain't going down. So what's another solution for it?
So...
That's, you see what I'm saying, Mr. Fidel?
I do, I do. I absolutely do.
I understand. Nobody's saying that you want the rates to go up higher. The city, whatever it is, the forces to beat are making it to go higher, but it cannot go so high at a point where your payment is so high that the person can't, you know what I mean? You have to make it where water is a necessity of life. Don't use the necessity of life to kill us.
Sure. I agree.
It's a simple solution.
Yeah. So a few years ago, if you recall, we tried to implement another discount, right? I mean, and unfortunately, it didn't make it through, but there's a movement now of a lot of communities are implementing a low-income discount, right? So similar to what the council did with the rates, right, for taxes, that you set aside some money for those homeowners that can't afford their, you know, are having issues financially.
Okay. So in other words, you're gonna try to do something with the water in the same way?
In the same way, absolutely. So I don't have that power to implement that discount.
You have the power.
It's a power that has to be done with the city council.
You have the power. The power is to suggest it and reinforce it.
True.
But if you don't suggest it and don't come to us and say, "This is a good thing," we will never understand it or do it. But you have the power to try it. So if you really want it, like you just said, communities are doing that now, so why can't... In other words, maybe next year or the year after... So, why can't, in other words, maybe next year or the year after, the year after that, eventually in the long run, you should try to implement something like that, where people that are within a budget limit should be able, you know, if they can't afford it, they shouldn't have to lose their homes, or they shouldn't have to charge their tenants outrageous prices for them to live there, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
That's a good thing. And I ain't got much more to say about how you run your operation, you know? I don't know, I'm not you, you're you, and I'm just me. From what I see, you tried to keep the costs down. I wondered, you said to us before, when Mr., the other council asked, you said, "We're saving the money." Now, you explain to the people that the money you're saving is going towards the enterprise fund that was low. So, you subsidized it in some ways. That money that you're saving, you subsidized it through the water and sewer, through the enterprise fund. So, that's one way to explain to the people where the savings are going. And as far as the other thing, you have no control how much the NWRA charges us. So, and I still don't know, the explanation they gave me years ago, it doesn't sit well with me that they're charging us because we're throwing more water. If it rains more, so the city of Chelsea has to hope that it doesn't rain. When it rains, we get paid, we pay for it.
True.
But in the long run, here's the basic question I want to ask you, Mr. Fidel. And I want all the homeowners and everybody to understand in simple words. Is there gonna be a formula to help the homeowners that are here? Is there any way, you know, I know, we're helping the seniors, fine, that's good. About the average homeowner, is there any way that we can help them? Do you foresee a formula in the near future or in the far future, whatever it is? That you propose something where you have money put aside for low-income, they have it, they can't afford it? That's one way. But that's only helping in one sector of it, right? Is there a way we can help everybody? You know, I would like to be fair to everybody, because sometimes you have the working poor. Those are people that fall between the cracks. They make more money than their standards, but still have problems. So, for those type of people, there should be some help somehow, somewhere. But I'm asking you, and you can tell all the public outside, whoever's watching this, right? The simple thing, is there any way in the near future that you foresee helping the people?
You know, I think that what we are doing, Counselor, is, as you said, we're trying to keep our costs down. We are trying to deliver really good service. And I hope that the residents are seeing a change, are seeing a difference. That when someone calls three-on-one, or they call DPW, we are answering those calls right away. We are making fixes, right? I mean, right away. The idea that costs are going up tremendously is not just here in Chelsea, I mean, it is nationwide. And it is something that would be a great conversation for us to have as a city.
You're the man, you're the guy, you're the gentleman that can make that conversation happen. You can bring a thought to the rest of the council, and you can submit to us what you think. So, I have confidence in your ability to tell us, you know, what is the best solution? Because in the long run, there has to be some way. Because if they keep going up and up and up like this, the people will be driven out. Not only will the homeowners be driven out, the tenants will be driven out. Because you can't afford to rent an apartment.
Sure, understood, understood, Counselor.
I thank you for what you said, and I thank you for explaining to the people what everything is. And I hope that eventually you will come across, Mr. Fidel, in a way to help the public more. Because you have done, you explained very well where the savings went. The savings went to fixing and to the enterprise that was low. And maybe the people outside can understand, I'll repeat it again. The only way you ever gonna see your water bill go down, it's plain and simple. If you subsidize it like Everett does. If you do not subsidize it like Everett does, it's always gonna increase, unless the NWRA decides it wants to charge us less money. Otherwise, the only way is for the council itself to turn around and put some fund aside to say, "Okay, we're gonna subsidize the water for the city, a percentage of it. And if we have extra money." Otherwise, whatever Mr. Fidel and his department is doing, it's fine. It's a good, you know, it's a good job, they're doing a great job, they try to minimize the cost. They're trying to do what they can, but they can only do so much. I guess the rest is up to us.
Sure, yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. So, that wraps up the presentation with regards to water and sewer. Of course, there's a second portion of this hearing, right? And it is related to the trash rates. So- The trash, yeah. And I'll just add that trash as a whole in the country is in a very difficult situation because of the cost of recycling, right? So, as you know, the cost of recycling has gone up tremendously. Now, one difference in the way that we charge for trash is that it is not an enterprise fund. It is actually subsidized by our taxes. So, we have historically never raised enough money to fully cover the cost of our trash cost. And every year, we have to give from our tax dollars a lot of money towards our trash. Now, in Chelsea, we are lucky in some ways that we have a resident, a homeowner incentive, right? So, if you're a homeowner, you are not charged that trash rate. If you live in your house, you're not trash, I'm sorry, you're not charged for trash. So, with all that said, in trash, what we are proposing is an increase of eight percent. So, eight percent, eight percent in trash costs. And I do want to share that right now, as you know, Counselor, we are in a little bit of flux with our contractor. So, we managed to extend our contract for one more year, right? I mean, and that was done really because of COVID. They were able to basically maintain our price with a three percent increase. Now, we don't know what is going to happen in FY22. So, in FY22, it might be a different situation at the end of FY22.
An eight percent?
Eight percent.
Wow, so that's due to cost, right?
That is due to cost.
What, the eight percent, give it to the people in dollars. What does it cost them a month?
Sorry, so, for example, for a residential property, it's gonna go from thirty-three dollars a month to thirty-six dollars a month. So, it's an increase of three dollars.
That's a moderate increase.
It's very modest, three dollars.
They say, "Ah, big money." So, explain to them exactly what it is.
Sure.
So, you explained that it's only gonna increase two dollars.
Three dollars, three dollars a month. That's the increase for trash.
That's moderate. But the part that you just said, right, is an interesting part, where you said, "Right now, we were able to adjust with the contract that we have now." So, now, what happens if you cannot get a contractor like that? Could you see an increase of your trash to twenty-five percent at one time?
So, I sure hope not, Counselor. I mean, we, both Tom and I, our city manager, and I are constantly negotiating this with our current contractor, another contractor in the area, right? So, we are going to work as hard as we can to make sure that doesn't happen in Chelsea.
The cost stays down. Not too long ago, I proposed to have us pick up our own trash. And the city manager replied and said, "I was talking to you and seeing if it's a feasible solution." If the increases keep going like that, right? You think it would be a feasible thing for us to pick up our own trash?
So, what the city manager responded is that, when we looked at it two years ago, you know, that the cost of the hauling was a lot lower than it's going to be, right? So, what he essentially said is that if the prices of a contractor keep going up a lot, then it might make sense for us to look at this again. But what he responded is essentially, you know, let's watch it, let's see in the next two years what happens with recycling.
When is your contract finished with this company?
The contract that we have with this company is up on June 30th, 2022.
So, next year?
Next year.
So, you have a whole year to determine how it is. So, do you foresee that the trash cost is gonna be skyrocketing?
You know, we're negotiating, as I said, with our current contractor and contractors in the area. And again, I mean, we're gonna try to do the best that we can and to ensure that we can keep a low price. But what Tom, you know, what he answered to your question was that if the cost of trash hauling keeps going up at the rate that it's going up now, it might make sense for us to look at it and bring it up internally. But again, it's something that we should do not now, but in a couple of years.
I understand, you wanna see how it goes. But the question I asked you was a simple one, Mr. Fidel. Give it a straight answer, will ya? Do you foresee the trash cost to be a lot higher than it is now within the next couple of years?
You know, Counselor, there's many things that I can't, I can't foresee. I mean, what I'm telling you is that we're gonna work as hard as we can to-
You're gonna try what you can to keep it low, through the contractor.
Absolutely, we definitely are. We're gonna negotiate, we're going to, you know, to try to go out and bid it out.
But from your experience, right, from your experience, earlier you stated that recycling is costing three times as much, right? So, from your experience, does this seem like it's gonna be higher?
Yeah, well, the recycling cost is interesting, right? I mean, so, one year ago, it was very high. So, we were paying almost twice as much to get rid of recycling as we were for trash, right? So, the market is changing though, right? And things are stabilizing, you know, there's things that are outside of our control, you know? And that is why I can't answer the question that you're telling me.
Okay, I put you on the spot, it's the wrong thing. But more or less, the people can have an idea, right? That, let me put it in a basic term, okay? So that people can understand, and I understand. If the rates don't stabilize and this trash hauling stuff doesn't stabilize itself, in the near future, you're gonna be doubling your trash. If the hauling companies decide that they're not gonna stabilize, or if the cost of having your recycle triple, because you said that recycle doubled within a year. So, what if they double all over again? So, the city would have no choice, because the hauling company's gonna ask you. So, you might have to increase your rate again, and at average of more than eight percent, maybe ten, maybe twelve, maybe fifteen percent. So, I get where you're coming from. So, that all depends on whatever the hauling companies decide to do and how it is that they charge us for the rates. If we get a good contract with the company, we have a lower rate. If we cannot, that means that people expect a higher rate. Plain and simple, is that an easy way to put it?
Yeah, no, the only thing that I would add is that our city manager and myself, I mean, we're constantly talking to not only our contractor, but also contractors in the area. As you know, there's a, we holler in Revere that we talked to quite a bit. There's many hollers in the area that want our business. So, we are going to work as hard as we can to make it as competitive as possible.
Considering our city, right? Even though we pay for trash, considering we're still a lot less than other places.
Absolutely, we definitely are.
I've been comparing what other cities charge and what they can do and what they can throw and whatever, right? We have the best trash system, I believe, maybe in the state, outside of Boston. Boston actually has the cheapest and the best. They don't, Boston, Boston's a big city, we're a little city. But, so, this city is done. When we implemented years ago to charge, you know, for trash, I guess everybody's doing it now. Most little cities are trying to implement the same thing that we did.
Absolutely.
They're trying now. So, we're ahead of the game. We're farther ahead than the rest in some ways, because it's happening all over now. It's not just happening here. Winthrop does it, I think, does Revere do it, I'm not sure.
Yes, they do.
They, you know, they all, they all, well, they all pay now, right? And we still have them, but we are still relatively low. And I can, the question you couldn't answer and I can't answer. It's basic, a simple answer. We pay what they charge us to pay.
Absolutely.
If they charge us more money, expect more money to be paid, and that's it. But you and the city manager's trying to keep it as low as possible.
That is correct, sir.
You're not out there trying to kill the people with your rates. So, that's to be commended, when you're not trying to kill the people.
Yes, sir.
If the people understand how it operates, they will, you know, no one wants to pay anything more. I don't, you don't. Nobody wants to pay more. But there has to be a limit of much you can actually pay, right, Mr. Fidel?
Sure, absolutely.
So, the city manager and your department, you know, you're trying to do the best you can. And that's a good thing, be commended when you try to keep it low. But in the long run, the other solution might be, if it goes, that you might have to have your own department to take the trash.
Sure, I mean, and as our city manager answered, it's something that we were going to look closely. And we're thinking that, you know, in another two years, we'll look at it again. So, we first looked at it, as you know, in 2019, we looked at it, and it didn't make sense then. In 2021, we looked at it again, and it looked a little better, but not as good. If the costs continue to go up, we will definitely look at it again.
Thank you very much, I have no more question to ask you.
Thank you, Counselor, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes our public hearing, thank you.